Right, uh, I hope everybody's had a good day today. It's, uh, we've gone a few days without a lot of heavy rain until the last two hours. I think we got fifty, we got a half an inch in about thirty minutes it seems like in certain areas. So, um, I hope everyone had a good Memorial Day. Last week, three-day weekend, as we recognize, you know, our service members who have served our country over the decades and centuries to give us the freedom that we all have come to enjoy and appreciate and allow us to gather in settings like this. If you would, please silence your cellphones. Today is Monday, June the 11th, and I've actually got 4:32. Today, we're having a public hearing and call meeting and combined work session. And we'll be doing something very similar a week from today as well. This time of year, we have our budget, uh, budget presentations, and then my expectation is a week from today, we hopefully will be adopting our budget if things go accordingly. We do have extra copies of the agenda up on the podium, correct? Uh, if you don't have a copy, we have those readily available. Um, again, we do have a public hearing on a land use matter, and I'll go through the particulars on that in just a few minutes. Um, as I shared with Mr. Allman a little while ago, some of our, uh, some of it sounds redundant, but there's a certain reason why we have to do steps one, two, and three, and so on, just to make sure that we're meeting state law as well, as well as giving everyone their, uh, their opportunities to make any addresses to the board as needed. So, now, we're gonna move this forward, and we will call this meeting in order. If you would, please rise, and we recite the place of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you. Um, at this time, we have Mr. Caleb Gaines with the Bridge Church and also representing the White County Ministerial Alliance. Uh, Mr. Gaines, would you ask God's wisdom on this proceeding, please?
Yes, sir, if you guys would bow with me. So, Lord, we thank you tonight, God, for this opportunity to meet together, God, in this room, Lord, and we thank you, God, that the people you've placed in here, Lord, are here for a reason, God, and I just ask that your presence would guide us, God, that you would lead us, Lord, that you would help the officials and the people, God, who have the authority to make decisions, God, that you would just give them wisdom and strength and guidance, Lord, and we just lift up this nation to you, God, whether we have different opinions or beliefs or just state of mind, God, let us be together, God, for the cause of this nation, Lord, and we thank you that we do have the freedom to gather here, Lord. And, um, again, I just ask for your wisdom and your guidance, God, and, you know, if we feel stressed or we're just confused, God, I just ask that you would bring us comfort and peace, and we thank you for that, and in turn, we pray, amen.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to our agenda. Item four, Consider Adoption of the May 21st, 2018 Work Session and Call Meeting Minutes, including Executive Session Minutes. Jill, and I hope you had an opportunity to review those minutes. If so, do I have a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
Motion for it.
Mr. Bryant, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Goody, second. Any discussion with the board? Having none in favor of the motion, sitting by by saying aye. Aye, or say no, motion carries. All right, thank you. At this time, under our presentations, we'll be presenting the first reading of our proposed fiscal year 2018/19 budget. Mr. Melton, you have the floor.
Right, Mr. Chairman.
If you would, pull your microphone closer to you so that everybody can all hear.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you now.
You can hear me now? All right, gentlemen, this is the White County Board of Commissioners' fiscal year 2019 proposed budget. We'll start off by going over some of the highlights of the budget. Salary increase for county employees is included in this budget. There are also some new positions that were added as directed by the board. We're funding capital items and projects out of splosts. We're using, proposed use of fund balance and a slight millage increase. Okay. See here, the, excuse me, the White County millage rate, five-year fiscal history. The millage rate's been pretty flat the last five years. Three, three years at 9.168, and the last two years at 9.998. Okay, you see here, the general fund, this is the approved and amended budget for the last five years. I won't read off all those numbers, but they're pretty similar all the way down. And here are the numbers, uh, broken down by, by different areas, functional areas, and what they represent percentage-wise, and we'll go through each one of these in Okay, starting off, uh, this is just a pie chart of the 2019 general fund proposed budget of $18,925,734, broken down by different areas. Again, we'll go through each one of those individual areas here in a second. The largest, obviously, out of the general fund is, is public safety at 48.7%. We have general government, and we work our way down from there. Okay, the first functional area is agriculture. It's 0.3% of the budget. You see here, it's broken down between Extension Service and Georgia Forestry. We have the judicial, uh, which is $1,689,737. It's eight, 8.9% of the budget. You can see on the right, the different areas where the judicial part of the budget is broken down, and all the different courts. Next area is culture and recreation. It's broken down between parks and rec and libraries. Libraries giving $288,217, and park and rec getting $717,725, for a total of $1,5492, or 5.4% of the budget. Then we have housing and development, which includes building inspections, community and economic development plan and code enforcement. It's 2.4% of the budget, $447,476. Then we move to general government, which is 23% of the budget. You can see the breakdown for the different departments within general government. One highlight, the salary increases were left as lump sum in this area until we, budget's approved, and once that's approved, we'll break those down into departments. Then we have health and welfare, uh, which includes DEVACs, AVITA, family connections, public health, and the senior center. It's 3.2% of the budget at $600,120. Obviously, the senior center being the majority of that at $423,120. Then we have public safety, which is the largest percentage of the budget, which includes animal control, the coroner, the detention center, the sheriff's office, EMS, EMA, 911, and fire. And the last department we have is public works, which is $1.5 million, at 7.9% of We also have some separate funds, uh, which are special funds, restricted funds, and so forth. You can see here all the different funds, things like jail fund, drug education, grants, hotel and motel, solid waste, 911, uh, the Anonah Circuit, judicial circuit, juvenile supervision, inmate welfare, confiscated assets, and debt service, uh, which comes up to $4,737,665. Okay, 2019 proposed budget, general fund, as I said earlier, is $18,925,734. Other funds, the separate funds which we just went over, is $4,737,665, for a total, FY '19 budget of $3663,390. Okay, compared to last year's budget, uh, you can see the difference. Last year's budget, total budget was $21,153,444, proposing 11.65% increase in the 2019 budget Just to kind of summarize what we've gone over, again, the proposed expenditures of $18,925,734, we're proposing revenues of $17,738,752, and we're proposing to use $1,186,982 of fund balance, uh, out of an available $4,362,39, which would leave us with approximately 2.6 months' reserve of fund balance. And that would equate to a balanced budget for FY 2019. With that, I'd be glad to entertain any questions that you might have.
Not 2.6, one reserve of a proposed, roughly how much money is that? That's the only dollar sign we don't have.
Well, it would be, it would be, uh, it would be the $4 million less of $1,186, would be about, uh, 2.9 million, right at 2.9 million.
Like, off the fund, I thought the fund balance would be $4 million and $46,000, and that would be 2.6%.
2.6.
2.6, one, rather.
Is the 4 million.
Because, uh, huh? 4 million is 2.6.
He's saying that this one's gonna be left over for 2.6.
Yeah.
Okay.
Huh?
Guess what he said?
To be, answer your question, Mr. Nuss, it'd be $2,859,257.
Okay, he's not saying that.
Thank you.
That's not right.
So, your proposal is to take the 1.1 off the 4.0 and come up with your 2.9, correct? Am I understanding it right?
That's correct. 2.85.
Yeah, change it.
We currently have $4,462,39 as fund balance, and we're proposing to use 1.1.
Roughly, the fund balance is a million dollars.
That figure is that figure, the 2.1.
Yeah.
And then, available's $4 million, subtract 1.1 million, leaves you the 2.859.
Which means it ain't available on the.
Right. For our next presentation, just as a reminder of clarification, put on there what would be available, national dollar figure. We continue to put the 2.6 in there, but include that 2.859 million dollar, just our knowledge, the public's knowledge, and so on.
I will do that, Mr. Chairman.
We just calculated it, but, okay.
So, after you use the fund balance, we don't have a 2.6, one?
Yes. We have 2.6 months after, after we use the 1.186,982, will leave us with 2.6 months of reserve.
Well, if we're not taking the calculation, which I know we're gonna be getting this in the next week or two, with the tax assessments are going up, what's coming after that and what's gonna be left over at the end of this budget, too?
There may be nothing left over at the end of this budget.
There may be.
That's what they said last year, and a miracle from God fell out of the sky, and we got a million, too. I mean, so, you know, I've been sitting here 15 years, and every year, we're finding a million dollars at the end of the budget, so, I mean, that's, that's my only argument the whole time.
Well, let me share with the, uh, the folks in the audience what we're talking about. After our budget year closes on June 30th, our budget year is July 1st to June 30th each year, uh, we, our external audit firms, listed and company, they come into a full-fledged audit of our books, and they go through, double-check, uh, any, uh, any items that we have not encumbered, any items that have not been accounted for, and they turn around and give us a, an audited statement. You have to correct me, Mr. Melton, and Ms. Jody, if I'm wrong with the way I'm describing this.
That's correct, and that, that $4,462,39 is based upon that audit.
And we've been very fortunate, we, our county has received very strong audits over the last several years, and once we accumulate all those, that information come October, November, we're able to, uh, account for some funds toward either revenue or less expenses than what we're accounting for today, so.
And after next budget, she does, for our next monthly budget, we'll have a little bit more tighter, we'll know where, how, how close we are, so.
Correct.
Next one will be, what, April's, we'll be looking at. At the end of month, you'll be showing us April's.
We'll be looking at May.
May, and by February, so, I'm trying to say, at least we're counting over where we stand over there.
So, we will have June's final, June 30th data until the end of July, so.
And Commissioner Bryant's absolutely right, because if there's any money left over at the end of the year, that will roll in fund balance in, when, when the audit is done at the end, after the end of the year. Well, we won't know that until, since time is, your honor's.
All right. Jill, any questions that you have, as well?
I just noticed that the, that he, that the, on revenues over there, that had the most aggressive increase in tax, taxes that we've shown several years, got about a 15% increase over last year with 1.1, almost 1.6 million projected increase in taxes, which we've never done before.
Well, I think they saw it in the 2000s, perhaps, when the economy was bustling. As folks in the audience are well aware, '08, '09, we experienced one of the strongest, the hardest recessions that we've ever seen in our, in several generations. You know, we saw our budgets, assessments, values going down. It's like turning an aircraft carrier in the middle of the ocean. It takes several miles, and you can't turn it around, so we're starting to see the swell or the curve coming back, so.
The preliminary digest we used was increased by over $44 million.
So, that was before any appeals?
Yes.
Well, what's it at, on appeals, 15?
Yes.
Good thing for this one.
Have we heard anything as far as appeals, if they had a lot?
Said they had not had very many, when I asked them last week.
Well, we have gone, like I said, gone through a season where assessments went down. I think most folks reasonably, reasonably understand that, uh, we're seeing a little uptick in the economy, so, this is my opinion. Jill, I don't want to belabor the presentation. Any other questions? Folks in the audience, we will be doing another presentation a week from today, um, as well as, uh, in this meeting, I will be entertaining any questions. I'll open the floor up for any, any more comments as well, so, just give me a heads-up of what's going on. Mr. Melton, anything else on that matter?
No, sir, unless you have any questions, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. Moving on, under our public hearings. All right, this is the part I said a little while ago, may seem a little redundant, but there's, again, there's certain ways we have to handle these, uh, public hearings, just to make sure that we afford each applicant and citizen the same opportunity across the board. So, gentlemen, this is tab six in your book, um, I'm sorry, we are in item seven, excuse me, item seven. Conduct a public hearing on land use application filed by Mr. Donald E. Allman to redistrict property located on Doc Dorsey Road from C1 Community Commercial to C2 Highway Business District, that's tax match parcel 061-235D, the total acres of 2.806 acres. Again, I, that's tab seven.
Mr. Chairman, uh, I think we need to open it up for a public hearing on the budget first, on the 26th. I did the presentation, though.
Okay.
We have to do the budget.
John, sit back there. Thank you for clarification. I admit, I make mistakes. Sorry, I got my sixes and sevens. If you'd see my notes I have up here, you'd, you'd wonder sometimes how we can make anything out of, so I apologize. Okay, public hearings. If anyone, like, may he comment regarding the budget, all right, in the budget, raise your hand if you'll come to the turnstile. Uh, need to get your name and address for the record. Uh, we will, uh, need you everything on the record. Ms. Early, I saw your hand go up first.
I'm Linda Early, and I live at 1037 Joe Black Road. I'm here, as well as some other members of the Friends of the Library, Friends of the White County Public Libraries. We have almost 200 paid members, and we represent and advocate for the thousands of library users in White County, and we're here to tell you that we appreciate your continued funding of the White County Public Libraries.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And, by the way, congratulations.
Thank you.
I may be out of school here, but, uh, congratulations, and we look forward to serving with you through your upcoming tenure with the Board of Education.
Thank you.
It's okay. Sheriff, do you have to see anyone out in the lobby, in case they can't hear me, just in case?
No, sir. Nobody out there.
Okay.
Could I ask a question about?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, there's, you know, there's here, when it says, uh, you know, under Henry's or wellness personnel handbook, I don't know what that is, and then on finance, it's like a drop, decrease in the amount, it says personnel change, does that mean you've eliminated a position, or, just wondering what those things are about?
Mr. Melton, Ms. Shannon, you know, here to ask, ask the question about the wellness.
I'll let Shannon answer that question.
Yeah, and for the wellness, we had one provider that was doing our annual wellness screenings for our employees, and they no longer provide that service, so we put that out to receive quotes on that, and we have a new provider, and that cost did go up. The personnel handbook review, uh, is just a legal review for our personnel policies that's not been done in several years, so we need to contract with a, uh, legal provider in order to review those, make sure we're in compliance with all the state and federal laws. And on the, the finance, that's due to personnel changes within the department, someone leaves and someone comes in, and their salaries are different, that would reflect a difference in that line of.
You good, Ms. David? Okay, all right. I don't want to belabor the point again, but, uh, all right. I'm gonna, offer three times. First time, anyone else? Second time? Three times, once, twice? All right. Again, just to reiterate, we will be doing a presentation, again, a week from today, very similar format. At that time, again, it's like a broken record, uh, I'm anticipating, uh, possible vote, and we'll be, uh, asking for a motion from the board regarding the budget. Just so, just kind of for your information purposes, um, our actual tax digest should be adopted by the end of July, 1st of August. At that time, uh, we'll have a stronger feeling where the digest is actually coming in from the assessor's office, and then the board will be, at that time, based upon the budget, have a review where the millage rate is accordingly, and how we're gonna be funding the budget, so, thank you. Have I missed anything else? All right.
That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All right, back to item seven. We're gonna, I'll reiterate, a public hearing on land use application filed by Mr. Donald E. Allman to redistrict property located on Doc Dorsey Road from C1 to C2, uh, tax match and parcel 061-235D, total acres 2.806 acres. Mr. Sells, thank you so much for working with us. You have the deal.
Okay, this application is to rezone from C1 to C2. This property fronts on 115 East at, and adjoins Doc Dorsey Road. Adjoining the property on the south side is primarily already a C2 district, there's also A1 and R1, uh, there's C1 on the east and west, and R1 to the north. The White County Cooperative Planning Future Land Use Map shows this area a single-family low-density, property is supplied by White County Water and Septic, and the purpose of the rezoning is to allow for a mechanic-type garage on the, on the facility. The applicant, Mr. Allman, is here, and he'll be happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Sells, thank you. Ms. Allman, uh, as we spoke a little while ago, just give the board a brief synopsis of what you're planning on doing, but I know Mr. Sells already shared that with us, but kind of, from your viewpoint.
Yeah, the, uh, it's a corner property on Doc Dorsey and 115, three miles east of the square. It's on the right, we got a personal care facility right there on the, on the property here, and, uh, behind it, some chicken houses, and a, I think it rezoned that C2 building, put a shop-type garage there. And, uh, property road, Mr. Freeman's, as far as I know, he's still there, and another commercial on Doc Dorsey and 115 on the other corner. And, uh, we wanted to build a garage that we can, uh, you could probably use half of it, lease out half of it, it's plenty. And, uh, they built it out, oh, go ahead.
Do you anticipate doing mostly residential, or small, or cars, or you gonna do commercial, or it could be a mixture?
Well, I'll, I'll probably lease it out for a car garage, and, uh, you know, small trucks and that kind of thing. It's right on, kind of a commercial driveway we put in back in '07, I believe, was.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Allman?
You gonna fence that one, or you just gonna leave it open? You gonna put a fence right?
I planned to put a fence, or a fence, uh, on that area, yeah, on the garage here, and it's an entrance on Doc Dorsey Road, I'm talking, but it's a commercial driveway on 115.
Yeah, right before you get to the little house.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
I can already change that next door.
We can have a shot, candidate, but, but he got one on, too.
All right. Mr. Allman, thank you.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Okay, at this time, um... Okay, at this time, if you want to open the floor up for anyone who have, perhaps may have concerns, number one, who are in support of the application, or number two, who may have concerns or may even be against the request in general. So again, what I'll do, I'll open the floor up. The first time be those who are here in support, who want to speak in, who speak pro for the application. I'll issue three calls, as is our normal practice. Then after that, we'll do the same thing for those who have concerns or perhaps could be against the request. I'll issue three calls on that item as well. And then after that, we'll close the, I'll close that portion of the public hearing, and then we'll move into a possible vote. And I'll be asking the board what their wishes would be. So at this time, if you, I'll start the clock. If you have, if you'd like to say something in support, raise your hand. I'll get to you and get your name and address, just as we did on the public hearing under the budget. Again, it's not uncommon not to have any comments, so it's, but it's just a, we have to go through these hoops. Okay? Second call? We really do, we need to sign someone to come up with clean jokes during this time that we don't have any, any takers. Okay. I'll issue the third call. If anyone has any comments in support of the application, going once, twice? Okay. We'll close the, that section. Ms. Shannon, if you'll not take the record, we issued three calls for those in support of the application, and we didn't have any comments at that, at that section. And at this time, I'll open the floor up for anyone who were to be concerned or have, who have concerns regarding the application. Raise your hand, I'll get to you, get your name and address, and let you give your comments. That awkward moment. All right, second call? Okay, third time. Anyone want to speak with concerns or perhaps against the application? Going once, going twice? Okay. Ms. Shannon, if you'll not take the record, that we offered the three calls for anyone who were to have concerns or could be opposed to the application we had before us, that we have any takers? Gentlemen, do you have any questions yourselves this time, at this time?
I would note that the planning commission did hold a public hearing on this and voted unanimously to approve the application.
Okay.
One question I have, that I had, I noticed in the letter from the Environmental Health Department, I was a little confused. Is there an existing septic tank on the property?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir, we have. It's like an office trailer that has a septic system.
Okay.
Yeah, that's been in with the, with the permits and whatnot. About a few years back.
Thank you. Any other questions, guys? Because I want to, all right, I hereby close this. The public hearing is officially over on this section. Having no other comments, I'm going to move us on to item eight, which is the actual consideration of the land use application filed by Mr. Donald E. Almond to redistrict property located on Doc Dorsey Road from C1 Community Commercial District to C2, which is a highway business district, that's tax map marked parcel 061-235D, total acres 2.806. Gentlemen, you, in your package, you've had an opportunity to review the application we conducted in the public hearing. We've heard of it on, do I have a motion to approve and/or deny or to table? What's your wishes?
My motion would approve the change.
Motion to approve? Commissioner Nix? Commissioner Bryant, second. I think, Mr. Hawkins, Commissioner Bryant beat you to the first one. Any other discussion with the board? All right. Have done all favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, say no, motion carries. Mr. Almond, thank you for your time. We appreciate, we know this is, sometimes can be a lengthy process, but we try to get you moving along as quickly as possible. And we do appreciate in White County. Thank you for your investment and sending your funds here in our county.
Yes, sir.
We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Your, your application is approved. All right. Moving on to item nine, review the, review and update the board on the flash flooding, storm damage, and assessments, and recovery process. Dave Cantini, on the Works Director. You have the hill.
Okay. Hand out. Chairman, here's actually the application. I'm going to hand out actual notes for this. I'm going to approve. This is going to, what happened? Thank you. What you have in front of you is an assessment that the road department came up after the storm damage from Alberto. Came out to approximately $201,859. And what we did is we got an L-MIG application for the chairman to sign to hopefully get some funding from the state. So, any questions? It's a lengthy list. We're working on some of the smaller, smaller items. In order to pay for the top portion, $102,457, we will need approval for some kind of funding for this.
For those audience who haven't had an opportunity, due to the rains, we had a couple of, well, this Thursday, a couple of weeks when we actually, when we started losing, in particular, Carolina Springs Road, that's, that's the road that comes kind of to the surface that we lost, was it 600?
660 feet.
For those who have not had an opportunity, because we have closed the road off, that's a road that we recently paved, and we have obtained a jobs creation grant through the State of Georgia Department of Community Affairs. We finally got it paved last year, and unfortunately, the mother nature decided that she didn't like the road where it was located. She up and moved it, literally moved the asphalt. It was, it's a flooding that we, I, I'm not going to say anything about age, but I've lived here my entire life. I've never seen anything like this. It looked like an earthquake for those who have not had an opportunity. So Carolina Springs, as long as a few other roads, we are going to be requesting the State of Georgia. The State of Georgia does have some emergency funds available that we are requesting assistance because due to the amount of, well, you heard the figure, of $201,859. These are items that are outside of our normal budget. So we're going to attempt to see if the State of Georgia, because the state was involved on Carolina Springs, for example, if they can come and perhaps assist us. So we're coming to the state with our hat in our hand, as a simple description. But there's a process we have to go through, and before we can do that, we've got to go to L-MIG, which in our local maintenance improvement grant process, the Georgia DOT. And I know the media, it sounds like I'm being a broken record, but I want you to have an idea of what we're having to go through. We've had several roads that culverts were completely washed away. Sandy flats immediately comes to my mind, the whole culvert was gone. And that was a six-foot culvert. What was the width of that road?
It's about 17 feet.
It's gone?
Yeah, totally gone.
But I'm going to give credit to Dave and the road department. Those guys, if you don't want to, if you want to know what kind of committed employees we have, within about three business days, they had the entire culvert replaced, set back in, and the road operational within three business days?
Yes.
That's a good, phenomenal work. And Tell.
I would send a little girl a little for my.
Yeah. Tell Jeffrey and Gerald, the boys that's worked up there, really thank you. I mean, words can't do, can't say it, I understand that. And all the rest of the guys, I'm just singling them out, because I was out there watching it, it really worked, so. And for the media, if you'd like to have a lot more information, our road link, road list is very lengthy. We're talking dozens of roads that are going to have to have work done to it, and Dave or Mike will be glad to share this entire, this very in-depth road repair list. Gentlemen, do you have any questions before I start asking for any motions?
Mr. Chairman, if I, if I could clarify one thing, you should have the quote in front of you from Square Deal on Carolina Springs, and you know that was the most damaged road. We, we've asked them for a quote. Phase two, which they quoted at $8,900, has already been repaired. We did that under emergency repair, is that first section of Carolina Springs. But the remainder of the road, we've asked them for a quote to go back in and repair that. As you know, they're the ones that built that road. They're on site. I think they would be the most effective to be able to do that. They quoted $77,385, and I think the board will need to approve that first and foremost to approve Square Deal to do that work before we, before we go any further or do anything else on any of these other roads.
Given the, the nature, because we're officially outside of the, the state of emergency, and I just want to make sure that we're covered legally here, given the fact that I think anyone with any common sense recognizes we're off the road, and it was just crazy flooding, that we're not going to be breaking any bidding rules and or regulations if we, it makes sense, Square Deal is there at the property working. It makes common sense, but I'll make sure that our keys of progress are.
Well, the state line is $100,000, so we're under $100,000. I think it's up to the board's discretion on this.
And that was, the amount was seven, I'm sorry, I didn't write the figures down.
77,385.
I'm sorry, 77,385. I'm sorry. Yeah, that was a small. Okay. Gentlemen, I'll keep it short, sweet and simple on this particular item. Do I have a motion to approve Square Deal to begin repair or begin that process in Do I have a motion to award that contract?
How are we, what, how are we going to fund it? If we get L-MIG money, we get L-MIG money. If we don't, we'll have to fund it out of splosh.
We can get some other projects tied in there.
What's the motion we do? Number one, L-MIG. Number two, if L-MIG does not come through.
We'll fund it out of splosh.
Fund it out of splosh. I did, I had the opportunity Thursday to take some state officials down Carolina Springs Road, and they got to see, I'm going to use the word devastation, the, the flood caused. So I feel like we had some advocates going to bat for us.
Because I don't think we have, don't have that type of money in our contingency.
No, it'll have to out of splosh. If we don't get it out of L-MIG, it'll out of splosh. I have motion to approve Square Deal, about $77,385 with funding to come in. Number one, L-MIG. If L-MIG grant does not come through, we'll fund it out of splosh. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Hawkins, second. Just kind of a clarification. Could we not go ahead and begin, because we know this process may take a little while, a little while with the state? Could we not just go ahead and pay for it out of splosh and, if we get to L-MIG, we are allowed to do that, correct?
I believe so. That's true.
Okay. All right, closed discussion. Got a motion, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, say no, motion carries. Now, we also are going to need a motion for the endorsement of the L-MIG application, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Gentlemen, y'all heard everything we've discussed here. Do I have a motion to approve the, I'm afraid you just stopped, I apologize, the application to the state under L-MIG for emergency grant funding? Do I have a motion? Mr. Good, Commissioner Bryant first.
Sir.
Mr. Nick second. End of discussion. All right, have none in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, say no, motion carries. Thank you. All right.
That amount on that application, was that 200 more?
We're applying for the tire.
Yes. Steph is also seeking approval for the remaining money. We are out of gravel money right now, so we can sure use the approval for the remaining to continue repairing these roads and rest of these culverts. So I seek approval to get some additional splosh money immediately so we can finish work. That'll be the remaining 80,000 plus the difference of the 70.
I wish we'd have done that, done that motion different a little while ago. We could have handled everything. I wouldn't, I wasn't thinking. Gentlemen, we got culverts and that dig gravel. $80,188.50. Do I have a motion to grant the ability to the road department to fund it through splosh?
Plus, you did the additional on the top, sir. The 89,000 and the 47,632, everything, including that 102 with, with the Carolina Springs, so 77,000. So that would, that would all be, need to be approved at this point to get those done too.
Okay, so you want everything, you want the whole?
Yeah, he wants the whole 200,000.
Yeah, because we got, we got road.
I wish you'd said that, because I wouldn't have talked about the gravel. All right? We've already approved 77,385, but please, $123,700.
We have approved the 70, in addition to what you've already approved, be $25,72.
Do we want that?
We have already approved the 77,385, and you just did the approval for the L-MIG, the 201, 085.
If you take the 201, subtract 77, that's where you come back to 123. So you can, I mean, we're not, we didn't vote on that 170 or 123, we just approved that one, correct? 77,000. I understand that correctly.
That's correct. You approved, you approved the, you approved Square Deal here repairing Carolina Springs at the 77,385, and the additional is to do all these other minor repairs.
Yeah, we, we don't, we're not really at the back of the case.
Yes.
But most of these will be done in-house, and, and they're under, you know, each But most of these will be done in-house, and, and they're under, you know, each individual project is probably, probably be under five thousand dollars. But we're gonna need the additional money. We need the additional one twenty-three to do the, to do.
One hundred and twenty-three thousand.
Yeah, I, yes.
Three seven, that'd be the way.
I believe exactly what you did.
Yeah, that would be. Alright, what if we just do, here we go, we're, we're looking like we don't know what we're doing.
We don't, we don't know what we're doing.
Alright. I wanna ask for a motion, for the total sheet is two hundred and one thousand, eighty-five dollars and ninety cents. If we don't get L-MIG funded, we'll fund it completely out of splosh. That'll cover the entire project, and we can do a better job on the presentation next time, alright? Do I have a motion?
How?
For two hundred and one thousand?
We can amend my motion to, to, for that number.
You want me to add a motion, you amend your motion?
We amend my motion to, to include the, the two hundred and one thousand.
Eighty-five dollars.
Oh, eighty-five, nine.
Okay, who seconded that?
The road department don't have any money building there on, you know, here in.
Hocken.
Yes.
Commissioner Hocken, let me get, let me get, will you agree to that amendment?
Yes.
Okay, alright. We've amended our entire motion, the amount of two hundred and one thousand, eighty-five dollars, ninety cents, to repair these roads completely. It'll be funded either through the L-MIG process or splosh, we're, depends on what we get approved off of the state. We're in discussion. Commissioner Hocken.
I thought we were gonna retract the first one.
But he just, Commissioner Goodger, you seconded.
I was talking, I wasn't listening.
You do that home of life.
So, if the road department doesn't have any money available funds, since this labor's gonna be coming from the road department.
Is labor in this price?
Is, that's a yes or no question, is labor in this price?
In the top hundred and two, yes. That's contract. The bottom is all gravel.
Okay.
So, we're paying our guys about the hour.
Not, not, well, not splosh, getting that, our guys are all in gravel. Yeah, okay. As long as it's all material, then I'm, I'm okay with that. I apologize, but I'm still.
Two hundred and one, definitely seventy-seven.
Yes, that's total cumulative total. Closed discussion, all in favor of the motion that has been amended, see if I might say an aye?
Aye.
Aye, folks say no, motion carries. Don't have this stuff going out of the way.
Well, no, they, they're a hard work.
Yeah, exactly, it's hard to keep up. That's one of the challenges of good combined work, actually, call meeting.
Well, they sound pretty good to get it on on paper, no longer than since it happened.
Alright, Dave, will you want to talk to us about our splosh project updates?
Yeah, um, reason why I gave you that is because I knew about the money situation, so I had a recommendation of hopefully what, how to proceed the next request here, just wanted to do an update on our, on the road projects. Stanley Nix, probably about another week or two, you know, weather is just getting, getting a little bit tougher to hit that, and Reggie's been trying to get it done, so we're looking at probably another, another week here to get Stanley Nix done, and we'll, we'll try to get that paved by August.
You know, let's stop right after this minute, I don't have a problem pushing Stanley Nix road back as deep as we can into the baking season, but give us an opportunity to see if we got any bad places up there. I would suggest that you go from August in, maybe into the latter part of September.
I don't want to go to later September, because we don't have a good history. We had a waiting, and it'll rain, and it'll rain, and it freezes, then we'll get, we'll get a lake.
Usually, September and October is usually our driest month around here, is, is rainfall in summer.
If we can play by ear with that, you know, you know, they're gonna be done, and if we can get them done, if we got the good weather, we can get them, we can get them, you know, not, not going through all this, but what my recommendation was gonna be is, is to pave the rest of them in spring nineteen. So, our money kinda holds on a little bit, okay?
I guess, I guess my contention is towards if we could squeeze another month out of our splosh dollars, it might give us a little room to, to build our fund just a little bit, and still get it done this year.
Exactly, that's my plan, I hope.
But I know how tight we are, I know how tight it's getting.
And the, the ones I was gonna try to push was Sam Craven, Joe Franklin, Asa Dorsey, FM, and Dandy for spring of nineteen. We can get everything prepped. Now, we're, we're a little crazy right now with the, the, the road department, so with, with the best we can to get all, all, all the other roads done, okay? Sam Craven can't, won't be started until August. Reggie's very busy, so that's why we're looking at maybe paving that in twenty-nineteen of, of spring. And Joe Franklin, Crumley Creek, same thing, September. And then it'd take him a couple of months to get that done, so we need to kinda push that out, so that's gonna help us out too. But Stanley Nix and Malden, if you'd still like to get that paved, we can get, we can get those two paved. That was, that was, that was just my recommendation for, for the asphalt part of it.
I would personally, this, this is y'all's districts, I'd like to see us, at least, of course Stanley Nix get done by this fall, I'm not paving, and then I'd love to see Sam Craven done this fall. And everything else, we can chill out. Well, Malden needs to be finished, that should be finished.
And it's that road.
Yeah, that's, that's, Joe Franklin.
Molly Road, finished it, isn't it?
Yeah, it just need to pave it last three, ten, four months.
I mean, there's, I know, I went through there today, I noticed there's some bad washed-out places, some places that need to be repaired, but I'm sure that's on your repair list somewhere.
It's, it's gonna get back over.
It took me a week to read that repair list, one morning. There's so many roads on our region, just about washed every road in county out. I went through Mark, was in my district, I thought I'm gonna look at it.
I, I just can't see Sam Craven getting done during, during paving season, with Reggie's schedule.
Well, y'all know how I feel about waiting a year to pave them. I, I mean, I've said it once, I'll say it again, I mean, example is.
It's your name, Rick, how do you do it?
Well, of all circumstances, with everything coming up like it is, with this emergency repair we gotta do, I, I'm gonna wait a few more months, I'm gonna pave too this year, but we gotta do what we gotta do.
I know you, you've got constituents that are eagerly anticipating.
Well, they all have, and they still have to, if we, if we can get the base.
I think if, if we do do this, I think the road department needs to reach out and contact the property owner, Sam Craven, and explain the situation that we're dealing with, because I hope some of them, and they.
Oh, yeah, they're expecting.
They're expecting this paving to be done this fall.
So, make sure I've got this correct for the minutes. Sam Craven, Joe Franklin, Asa Dorsey, FM, and Dandy Lane, from what you're recommending is that those would not be paved until spring of nineteen.
That's correct.
And that prep would be done in eighteen.
Right.
Then the other.
He's just asking, right now?
He's asking, hey, we're, we're about to tell him what we want to do there.
Well, we're waiting. Part of the problem on Sam Craven is we're waiting.
Mr. Nelson.
Mr. Nelson. And he's, he's telling us, two months?
Two months.
And he can't even get, he can't even get to it for two months.
Same with Joe Franklin.
Is he doing anything for us now?
Yeah. Yellow preserve.
Well, he's got everything over there, right?
Yes.
You know, he's not working on any of the roads. He's finishing up, up there on, uh, Stanley Nix, for whatever, a little bit, he's got to be ninety-five, ninety-six percent of our done.
We'd be worried till the storm.
Yeah.
We've had a hard ride for seeing things happen, so.
I tell you, this has been the most challenging year thus far, when it comes to our paving projects that I think I've ever seen, I'm not sure.
I don't remember being played.
Well, I don't, you know, I've always tried to respect you guys, you represent your districts, you know, how do you feel? That's, that's what it comes down to.
On Dandy Lane, I made a commitment to Helen. Where are we at on Dandy Lane?
So, where you in, one, Eastman?
All right, it's no disrespect, I've been here next to two months, so now, what's, I mean, it's a guy just refusing to, to do, because when I went, Mike and I, you know, Helen has agreed to help pay for that, and I, like I've said before, it ain't gotta go all the way, if we just get top hill at Helen shop, we can do the rest later.
We sent, we sent two letters.
We would get that done, because that guy, that motel is gonna be starting. Have we had any contact with him at all whatsoever?
We sent two, two separate letters, two separate times, had a call in, we have no response.
To Mr. Patel?
No.
No, to the property.
To a property owner.
What's his name?
Reese.
Reese?
R-E-E-C-E, yeah.
First name?
Email it to us.
It's on the right side going up the hill, where the little houses, if you first pull in, from there on up, heading up the hill.
Almost, almost at the property line of Sims and the, the hotel. That's where, is it meant for his property?
Yeah, that's why I said, you're talking about on the right-hand side, going up the hill.
Going up the hill at the Sims property line.
Yeah, at the Sims, what, going on north?
Yeah, we're going up.
You got the curve there, and then you pull into city driveway.
It's before that.
Okay, before you get that, it's on the right there.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Reese, alright, let me see what I can do.
It'd be a good time to do it, motel, when he puts that in, we can just take a ride on and go at least to the top of the hill if we can meet him, but if it don't work out, it.
Mike, have you heard anything from C. Helen regarding the hotel?
No, and I've, I've asked, and have not heard, and we have not had any contact with, with the hotel owner either, other than the original contact that we had with them. And they're going, they're going to have to get Eastman sitting there to do that.
Y'all have to pay for it, we won't get a bill open.
So, I don't know what, I don't know what their plan is.
For Helen?
No, the, the hotel.
Yeah, Richard Patel.
Jerry thinks he'd do anything to those folks, I bet.
I'll be glad to put a bug in their ear, I'd say.
We'll reach back out to the hotel owner and see where he's at.
Dave, do you need an answer on this?
Um, we got, we got time, you know, I was just trying to recommend to try to get the money to, hold a little bit. And then just, just for the record, Barney Crowe, Hawthorne, and Cedar Hollow, we are still putting them off a bit, and taking them, we will get them paid this year.
You're gonna have to put going to eat lunch with David Murphy, I swear to you.
They won't leave without saying the word.
Alright, why don't we, let's circle back to this list, a week from today. Be fine, they give you, each of you time to kinda check your districts. Dave, do you have anything else?
Mr. Chairman, can I ask one question while you're on that road issue?
Yes, sir.
In these new road, the roads you're paving is coming online eventually, are, are they doing a traffic survey on those studies, so we can run radar on them? If not, it needs to be done.
Mr. Mountain, Dave? We have, we have no, no plans on it, Mr. Chairman, but we'll be glad to have, we'll have to be, we'll have to have an engineer look at it.
I won't be able to use radar on them if they're not.
No offense, John. Wish the engineer under the bus. I'm not making fun of you, I just.
Because my, my word to the public is gonna be, they didn't do a survey, so if they raise game to me about them flying up and down the road to.
Give us some information, Mr. Mountain, regarding what it's gonna take. Dave, you have anything else?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Alright, item ten, consider approval of intergovernmental agreement with the City of Cleveland, Helen, related to proposed twenty-twenty splosh. Mr. Mountain, I presume you've got the hill on that?
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, in your packet, you have the agreement that we have reached, or supposedly reached with the Cities of Cleveland and the City of Helen, for the board's, for the board's improvement endorsement.
Alright, you need a motion?
Yes, sir.
And in that motion, you're also gonna be approving and authorizing resolution, which will give the chairman authorization to sign the intergovernmental agreement, that's how Kevin has it constructed, where there's two documents, so it's basically approval of a resolution and intergovernmental agreement, giving you the authority to sign it.
Give me one second, I'm trying to write that down.
And both those documents are in the package, the authorizing resolution and the intergovernmental agreement.
Alright, gentlemen, you heard the discussion, we have a motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement and resolution with the Cities of Cleveland, Helen, related to the proposed twenty-twenty splosh.
Motion approved.
Mr. Bryant first. Mr. Goodger second, discussion. Having that on the favor of the motion, see if I might say an aye? Aye, folks say no. Item eleven, consider approval of the estimate for the, of the estimate for the striping of asbestos road, item eleven. Due to asbestos road being so heavily traveled now, especially from Helen Highway over to Alford Seventy-Five, I know, I'm aware of the county receiving comments and all concerns from, and it was, me, for the record, it was the folks out in the community, especially the evenings, just, the road's so heavily traveled that it would be a benefit to have some white striping on the edge of the road. Mr. Mountain's gone out and gotten information for us, Mr. Mountain, you got the hill.
Mr. Chairman, in your, your packet, you have an estimate from Parker Traffic Markets for a total cost of seven thousand dollars to scrape asbestos road from Indiana with solid white, solid yellow, additional, solid white along the edges of the road.
Point of clarification, my package only had the five thousand, nine hundred dollars.
Let's see, they've got eleven hundred dollars.
It's eleven hundred dollars for the additional, for the, for the lines, the edge lines.
Yeah, from Helen Highway to Joe Black.
The, the edge lines are additional, in the quote.
So, what, because ours, I've got, we need golf.
Bicycle from over there.
It's not gonna be on bicycle lane, that's for sure.
It's a, it's a bicycle line, but.
I think it might be a ride on five inch strip.
Okay. Okay, so point of clarification, will be yellow striping the whole length of the road from Helen Highway to Alford Seventy-Five. Okay, so for clarification, will be yellow striping the whole length of the road from Helen Highway to Alford Seventy-Five. Then the white striping will be from Helen Highway to Joe Black Road.
But, um, that seven thousand includes the whole three, three point three mile.
That's the whole thing.
Yes, sir.
Yellow and white.
Yellow and white, seven thousand.
And, and edge line.
Yeah.
Well, white is the edge line.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm a commotion with, with splurge and do it all.
That's a hundred thousand, what does that sound like?
We're sending sales down, we just spent three hundred right there.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Bryant, beat you. End of discussion.
Is there a funding for shots?
No, it's gonna be splotch. We're gonna start taking somebody's salary here in a little bit. All right, close discussion, all in favor of the motion, speaking by saying aye. Aye, folks say no, motion carries. Item twelve, consider approval of State of Georgia's revocable license agreement for the purpose of widening the paving Joe Franklin Road on state-owned property at Smith-Goldwoods.
Mr. Chairman, we've, uh, we've coordinated with all the property owners up there to get easements for neither, to do the paving on Joe Franklin Road. The only thing left is the DNR property that's up there, and before you, you have an agreement with DNR to, um, afford, afford easements to do the paving.
Okay. Gentlemen, I have a motion to approve the license of the State of Georgia.
Motion approved.
Mr. Bryant first.
Second.
Mr. Goodger second, end of discussion. Having it all in favor of the motion, speaking by saying aye. Aye, folks say no, motion carries, thank you. All right, item thirteen, um, consider approval of the grant applications with Safer as the staffing for adequate fire and emergency response program through FEMA and the U.S. Department of Homeland Security. Mr. Murphy, before you say too much, I want to say, uh, to your staff, thanks for the work you guys do in, uh, going after these grants and what have you, so, uh, please share that with, uh, Cam and everyone who takes time to build these applications now.
I certainly will, I'll pass that along. I'll try not to muddy the water anymore in my presentation. Appreciate the offer, Jim, that was, I'm just trying.
We got, no, we got it.
Lining things up.
Here we go. He just coughs some money.
So, uh, he do a day job. So, what we've done, we've done a pre-application for a Safer grant, which is the, uh, staffing for adequate fire and emergency response program through FEMA, U.S. Department of Homeland Security. We're to that point where they're asking for a letter from the Governor and body, governing body to, uh, commit to funding their, your percentage of the grant. The total grant is for seven hundred and seventy-six thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars, of which the Safer grant will pay for seventy-five percent of the first two years and thirty-five percent of the third year. This is for salary and benefits for five firefighters. During the three-year period, the total for the county, what the county would have to expend over the three-year period would be two hundred and ninety-seven thousand eight hundred and four. At the end of the three-year period, the county would have two options. One, to fund all five positions at a hundred percent, or let all five positions go. There's no requirement to keep the five positions after the grant period. Those numbers are based on our current starting salary and benefit package for a firefighter. If the salary and benefits change during the three-year period, the county would be responsible for that difference.
David, I want to help you out just a little bit, I want to make sure I understand that this is an application.
Yes.
Okay. So, if the county were to find favor, we were to be blessed and receive the grant, that, at that time, it would still come before this board for approval, before any new firefighters would be added to the payroll, et cetera. So, this is for the application process, not the actual funding as of yet, correct, Mr. Murphy?
That is, well, that is partially correct, they're asking for you to, now, you can deny, you will be able to deny the grant before we accept it. But this letter that they're asking for you to send and sign is saying that you're in favor if the grant is awarded, that you would consider funding those positions for that three-year period.
Can you give the percentage breakdown again?
It's, it's seventy, it's seventy-five percent for year one and year two, and it's thirty-five percent for year three.
How long would you know, how long before you would have any idea if we, if you would get a grant?
They will be awarding grants sometime in the August to September period. Once we get that award and we accept it, we have a hundred and eighty days to fill those positions. After the hundred and eighty days, if those positions are not filled, that's when the grant period starts. So, to get the full benefit of the three years, you need to have them filled within that hundred and eighty days.
Let me ask you this, you're gonna see, on your, on the budget, you, you have two full-time positions that we're talking about, when do you think that they would be filled?
Those two full-time positions would be filled within thirty days after budget approval, so.
That's gonna be my question. So, we're giving you two on this budget, you're asking for five more.
Correct.
David, I want to apologize to you, once you come up with two hundred thousand, we just gotta hear more. I'll go on, I'll get back to you, I'm sorry, so, anyway, so, the two, Berkeley's two hundred fifty thousand, we know it's fifty thousand ahead, pretty much, so they won't pay seventy-five percent for the first two years.
Yes.
Yes.
We do this, I mean, I, I hate being a cog, but, I mean, I know we talked about next year, they're gonna have to look at it again, I mean, I don't know. What we're doing, if people get, I don't know, we gotta take it.
Well, we don't have to take it.
I know that's what he's saying, though, if he, if we do get it, then we gotta let us know. This fiscal year, yeah. So, that's something we're not funded for on top of what we're already trying to find now.
I'm scratching in the penny drawer, none anyway.
This is an opportunity, I know that a couple of years ago, you guys had asked us to look into this grant, we were denied the first year, and this, we did it again for this, this grant period, and we're to this point. Again, and there's a red highlight from the email from FEMA that says, this is not an indication of award, this is simply a request for information.
And I don't disagree with you, I mean, I know it's good opportunity, but.
Long-term, you gotta look at it long-term.
Yeah, exactly, and so, you know.
Those five employees will be ours in three years.
Yeah, two hundred fifty thousand dollars on top of what? No disrespect, that's not gonna be enough in three years, you're gonna be asking for five more?
Certainly, yes.
You know, I know what our ultimate goal is, and we've talked about this for years, to have a full-time fire force, and I just don't see scanning for full-time fire force yet, I know we're getting there closer every year, but.
We know what it's gonna take.
And I'm a five, you know, I'm with you on that, I've been advocate, it's just, I'm just trying to.
There's no doubt of your, any, any of your support on this board to the Fire Service or any of our public safety agencies, we don't take any, we don't doubt any of your support.
Let me know.
So, how much, I was just trying to see how much of that, how much of that funds would be in next year's budget? Did, did you break it down, and how much would be in, in next year's budget?
All right, I'll think back what you just said, all right, hypothetically, if we were to be granted this application, if we get approved October, and we have six months, which would be October to March, to fund those five positions, or fill those five positions. So, here's where I'm going, is, in theory.
What would it cost us next year?
Yeah, you're, you're talking about this March, April, May, and June.
Twenty-five percent of two hundred fifty thousand.
Well, then it's, it's pro-rata down by the month.
Yeah, we'd only have four months of that.
Then it would roll in, in the next year, roll in as a forty-five percent, and the next year, it would roll in as a sixty-five percent.
And the year after, that'd be a hundred percent.
Hundred percent.
Two hundred fifty on top of, what else we need? Just throwing that out, so, I mean, I know y'all.
Good explanation, David, you made us understand this, thank you, appreciate it.
I don't care what's more.
Once you, once you figure out what it, what it's gonna, let us know what it's gonna cost in the next, we're gonna have another meeting in the next week.
I have a letter signed by the Chairman by COB tomorrow, for us to continue forward, they put me on a deadline, they wanted it this morning at eight o'clock, and I said, there's no way.
Well, that's just for the application.
Guys, I'll say this, I don't, I don't have a problem with the application, because it's gonna come back before us in ninety to a hundred and twenty days to approve regardless. And at that time, if we see we can't handle this long-term, as crazy as it sounds, we may have to say no.
Your twenty-five percent for the first year would be seventy-four thousand four hundred and thirty-one dollars.
Is that for, the what, for three, three, four months?
No, that's just, that's for twelve, that's for months.
So, divide that by.
It's the next year. It's the next year what's getting in the year.
Third, third, roughly twenty-five.
Twenty-four thousand eight hundred seventeen, pro rata.
But before we go forward, let me ask one question, and quote, and what you were reading, make sure it was, it would be favorable to get this, if we get it, turn it down, then we're gonna be on the unfavorable list from now on.
Yes.
No, on my list.
Yeah.
On the family list.
Okay, guys, I'll keep it short, sweet and simple, do I have a motion to approve the grant application to the Safer program? Under the, uh. Yeah, under the, such that the final approval, that come back before the, before this talk.
May I make one comment before you take a motion?
No, you don't, you said, oh, good.
What I want, what I'm gonna ask for, this probably sounds crazy, but if you have any doubt or, or, uh, concerns about funding that over that five-year period, I would request that you deny it, then the procedure.
So, we're a three-year period.
Yeah, we're in a three-year period.
Comment, that's why I asked you that comment, that's what I thought I understood you say.
If you have any concerns about that two hundred ninety-seven thousand over the three-year period, I would.
We're talking about that it, it would run us about twenty-five thousand for this, this coming fiscal year, the next fiscal year, it'd be almost, almost eighty thousand dollars added to, but.
Roll, roll another year.
Yeah, eighty thousand for another year, and then the.
Two hundred fifty thousand.
And then two hundred fifty thousand.
And, yeah.
I'm trying to figure how many years that, I have some time to figure that, be, be, be a year, eight, eight.
And I say that, I say that for this reason, because there may be an opportunity, I don't wanna, I don't wanna kill an opportunity down the road when we are able to do that, and, and not be able to be on the good list.
That's what I asked you.
You understand where I'm going?
I said, I'm not against it, I'm just trying to figure it out.
You think there, there's gonna be, or you say there, there's might be a, there's a possibility of another opportunity for.
Well, they do this every year, and this grant is a, is all, so far, Congress continues to fund this program every year. So, what I'm saying is, I don't wanna miss an opportunity later.
Right.
Go for it and don't do it.
You might be thankful, don't, like, again.
Correct, I understand. Well, you know, I mean, we're all basically sitting up here facing the same thing, working in line of everything that's going on and happening with our budget, I don't see how we can honestly do it. At this time. Nobody else would say that. How many full-timers have we got right now, David?
Twelve.
And we have approved.
Two more, two.
Two more, so we'll have fourteen next month.
We seem to be going salty, correct? Or somebody's going salty part of the time.
Part of the time, so I guess.
Yeah, we have two, we have twelve full-timers and four part-timers, we're told of sixteen paid, I got this a couple of hours ago.
We're gonna be manning all them stations. No, no, I wouldn't be. He got, he got, you, you're gonna manning stations twenty-four seven.
We're gonna keep one twenty-four seven, and the others will be manned, uh.
During the hot times.
During the hot times, usually that's Monday through Friday, uh.
Eight days.
Eight, eight, something like that, but, but those hours vary, and when they come in varies, and that sort of thing.
These sal, when you built this salary base for this, did you build it off of current?
Current, uh, well, not what's coming, not with the possibility that's coming up, but it's based on our current budgetary numbers. So, that's another thing you have to consider, is that, just going with it, if these numbers, anything that changes beyond where we are now, has to be absorbed by the county as well.
Have you ever thought this far here, and I maybe, I don't know if I should say this, Robert, what would it really take for us to, for us, or for the county to have a full-time fire department?
Yes, sir.
I can tell you that, I can tell you that, too.
Full-time employees, I mean.
Three million dollars.
And what are we putting in the fire department today?
Look at their budget, hold on.
I would say salaries is about eight hundred thousand.
Hundred million.
I don't know that number right off the top.
Well, this is one four two, one four two seven three, and that's not salaries, I know.
One point two seven three, that's, but there's, that's mostly salaries.
That's mostly salaries, yeah.
It takes about four hundred thousand to operate the department, with the upkeep, equipment.
Four hundred thousand come out of this one point two?
Yes.
So, then, then you were right, we're somewhere around eight hundred fifty-nine hundred thousand dollars.
We've studied it every way we could, and we've got a master plan for all that.
And how many, how many people personally are with that budget?
I think that's twenty-eight, I believe.
Full-time, full-time.
And then camp the new trucks, you might have to buy a foot on the fleet, either.
Not, that's not buildings or equipment, that would just be. Thank you for asking.
Well, well, I think everybody's.
I think you need to be, I think you need to be situationally aware of where we, or what happens at some point.
What it will, what it's eventually gonna take to have that.
Right. Well, on our.
I know there's risks then, and I know we do a lot.
On our Appalachian Trail Rescue, out of that, yesterday, out of that, uh, close calls we had yesterday, out of our, uh, full-time staff, we had, uh, half of our full-time staff just handling those incidents on the Appalachian Trail. So, if you get something else major happening at the same time, then.
They didn't even call those in till late, did they, till late when they called us?
We, we were there from, initial call started at eleven-thirty, and the last was up to eight o'clock last night, sometime.
This is going on, seems like every weekend.
Well, we market ourselves as a tourist destination, and as it grows, we're gonna have more folks. The more volume you have, the more opportunities there are, you're gonna have issues, yeah. Boys, what you wanna do?
You know, here's, here's the other thing, too, is, uh, are you, you, you gonna be coming back next year looking for some additional employees, or, you know, I, I mean, if we get a grant to cover part of it, but I'm, I'm just looking, are we gonna, are we looking to increase our staff anyway in the next two years, three years?
Well, I can tell you, if we continue to hold as we are, uh, see, I don't, our original budget request this year. Our original budget request this year for personnel was seven people. So, we've got that down to graciously, y'all have agreed to, so far. If our current volunteer situation continues to hold as it is, uh, we may be okay. If we lose, uh, half of our volunteers that are active now, when you see, when I present to you, we got forty-seven, forty-eight, forty-nine volunteers, only about half of those are actually responding to calls. So, you're cutting that in half. Then you gotta figure in their time and availability that they're around and available to go to calls. So, I can't say whether or not I would ask for any more positions, 'cause I don't know what the condition of White County's gonna be in.
No, I, I was saying, you know, we have added so, just about, or something, uh, almost every year right here, and I was just wondering. If this keeps on, we, we're looking at a grant that could fund five people in, if we, and it, the grants for three years. I'm just looking, in the next three-year period, are you gonna be looking for additional people that we could?
I would hope to say no, but I can't, I'm not gonna officially say no. I can't.
Is that official?
I would like to be able to say that that would be the case, but I can't.
Well.
Not with the unknowns right now.
I, I, I guess we probably, I don't know, I, I, a little mixed, but I, I would say probably wait until next year's application.
Is that four of a motion?
Yeah, make a motion.
Okay, motion to, uh, withhold the application of SAFRA until this time next year. All right, Commissioner Goode.
I'll sign the discussion or comment.
Okay.
Just don't let the comment notice. Like, I'm not against the extra people. You know, I mean, I know what y'all do, and I'm just looking at the finance end, so I can say, I know, next year, I'm, I mean, you know, we go through the general budget, and we've tried to, we've progressively gotten better. I know we're not there yet, but, you know, it's just, but anyway.
We certainly appreciate that progression. It certainly, uh, benefits us every day.
I know.
And we thank you guys for that.
All right, close discussion. Got a first and a second. I'll favor the motion, see if I can say an aye. I almost said no, I almost said no, so you say no, but anyway. All right, uh, they, put this down, and we'll come back and circle this wagon next year.
Thank you very much.
Item fourteen, consider approval of the two thousand eighteen-nineteen ACCG IMRA to Irma Profit Liability Insurance Proposal. Ms. Shannon, do you have the hill on that?
Yes, I'm pretty much everything is the same with this proposal from the seventeen-eighteen, um, insurance package. The only difference is there's about a twelve-thousand-dollar increase, and that's totally connected to salary adjustments that were made earlier in the year. A portion of our property liability is based off of our payroll, so, um, the cost is about twelve-thousand dollars higher. But as far as rates and the experience rating and how they come about figuring out our premium, all those numbers are the same.
And that's the two-hundred-and-two-thousand-six-oh-seven?
Yeah.
Gentlemen.
Is this, does this include the, uh, Yona Preserve or anything? Is Yona Preserve included in this?
Well, as far as like the trails and all that, you know, they don't insure those 'cause there's not a structure on them, but from a, from a liability standpoint, yes.
A liability is all.
Yes, and, and when we asked them about insuring Yona Preserve, um, the quote they gave us was minimal for adding that. Basically, we'll insure structures, but they don't insure the fall fields and things like that.
Gentlemen, I have motion to approve the ACCG I, Irma, uh, Profit Liability Insurance Proposal.
So, move.
Commissioner Nick's first.
My second.
Commissioner Goode your second. Discussion. Having on favor the motion, see if I can say an aye. Aye, I almost say no. Motion carries. Item fifteen, consider approval of two thousand seventeen-eighteen budget amendments. Ms. Jody, do you have the hill on that?
Um, yes, sir. This is just a request to approve the budget amendments, um, to comply with our budget and audit standards. You've already approved the increases themselves. This is just for the actual amendment to the budget. And this is, um, related to the extension agent increase, the sheriff's office minimum increase, and then, um, the full-time maintenance person that we increased, it was gonna only affect like four and a half of the pay periods.
Again, upon the occasion, these are items that the board has already approved. We're getting pushed out to their particular, uh, line items and order of apartment. Motion approved.
Motion to approve the budget amendments.
Commissioner Goode.
Second, transfer it from the contingency. I understand.
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman, second. Yes, come out and continue to see, gather the discussion. Having on favor the motion, see if I can say an aye. Aye, I almost say no. Motion carries. All right, and, uh, something that, after item sixteen, um, so that we'll have it on the record that I did, uh, make note of it. Uh, Mr. John Stover, Carter Slue, our engineering associates on, uh, several of our projects, in particular Yona Preserve, is, uh, only able to be here today. Uh, the board will be voting on some matters next Monday, so I'm just gonna head, John, we're gonna get to you in just a few moments here. And thank you for your patience.
He said he charged about an hour.
Well, add that to David's department. Take your pick, live a coin, anyway. Item sixteen. I'm sorry, guys, it, it's.
Getting crazy.
You gotta laugh, keep crying.
Um, this here is the following board appointments. Now, we have the White County Department, uh, DFAX Board, we have the Development Authority, Chamber of Commerce, AVITA, as well as the Industrial Building Authority.
Chairman, I've phoned you. I've had a few people, there again, which I know I postponed this last time, so for sure, I'd like to rebid the VITA. I've had a lot of interest in that. I know we've got some good applications, so, that's so hard. Every time we get one on there, it's not gonna last that long. I'd like to postpone the VITA and redo that, but at least that one. Unless somebody else has some issues or something else.
All right, if you guys are fine, postpone the VITA.
Fine.
All right, so you want to re-advertise it?
Please.
Okay.
That's all, everybody ends.
All right, with the other fours, uh, I'm gonna go just department. Uh, Chamber of Commerce, uh, Todd Marks currently. Mr. Marks says ask for reappointment. Do I have a motion to report Todd Marks back to that board?
Make a motion.
Commissioner Goode first.
Say.
Commissioner Hoffman, second. Any discussion? Having on favor the most, see if I can say an aye.
Aye.
Aye, I almost say no. Motion carries. Development Authority, um, we have, uh, two positions open, correct?
So, yeah.
The two hundred and thirty?
Development Authority has three. Uh, Wayne Wiltsey, um, Tom O'Bryant's position, and Bob Oliver will be coming on.
Okay. I, I do understand that a couple of you had an opportunity to interview Mr. Muse.
There we did.
Yeah.
It went well?
Yeah. I recommend Mike Muse of, uh, that board.
Uh, Mr. Muse, he's a head of ones, not head of ones.
Silicon Valley watch.
You know what I was talking about, I'm sorry.
Getting bad when I read the mind out there.
Yeah. I'm sorry. Mr. Goode your second, uh, I'm sorry, made a motion. Commissioner Nick second on Mr. Muse.
Yeah.
Okay, the Development Authority, uh, first, second, any discussion? Having on favor the most, see if I can say an aye.
Aye.
Aye, I almost say no. Mr. Muse appointed Development Authority. I have any other motions at this time? Have none, uh, Ms. Shannon, will you go up and re-advertise it, please?
I will.
We still have the Industrial Building Authority. We have two positions open on that. Do I have a, uh, any motions or wishes the board on those two items?
Motion for Mark Green.
Okay, motion to reappoint Mr. Mark Green to the Industrial Bill Authority, second.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Having on favor the motion, see if I can say an aye.
Aye.
Aye, I almost say no. Motion carries.
And I apologize on the DFAX. I did not put it in your package. I was waiting on Scott Wilbanks to get some information back to me, and I just failed to put it in there. Um, Cheyenne Thornton, who y'all recently, um, appointed to the DFAX Board, she needs to come on. Um, and he has recommended Erica Owens, who is a school counselor at JP Next, to take her position. So, I'm sorry, I did not put that in there.
I'd like to, I had a, I'd like to see your application before we.
Oh, I see.
So, keep taking that out, we'll spin over the next one. Commissioner Bean, please. And the other positions, uh, other vacancies, uh, we'll be re-advertising those. Agree? Everybody's, am I?
Yeah.
Am I getting the feeling?
Sure.
All right.
You're getting some, uh.
I'm getting, I'm getting.
We're picking up what you're laying down.
All right, picking up what I'm laying down. So, got a groove on now. All right. Okay, have it sent it now. At this time, Mr. John Stover, Carter Slue. John, again, appreciate your patience, and we understand, because of occasional conflicts, you're not, will be able to be here next week, so you're up here today. And then get an update on where we are with several of our projects, in particular Yona Preserve, so, did you get rain though while you were out there?
I did. But unfortunately, it seems when I come up here to check on the site, it brings the rain with it, so I apologize for the rain.
It came, it came north.
Um, yeah. Yes, sir. Uh, Yona Preserve has moved along, been delayed somewhat with the weather, but other than that, uh, they're out there continuing to work, and as y'all discussed previously, Mr. Nelson's out there grading with most of his, fortunately, they were grading right up until the moment that the lightning started hammering around us, so. We've, uh, received one pay request, which has been paid. We received the second one moments before this meeting. The waterline work to provide water from there is beginning off of Malden Road and Asbestos Road. Uh, they're at the creek crossing there on Malden and Road now, um, and we'll extend that on through the property. Currently, the, uh, site has been cleared, all the wood's been hauled off, most of it's been rubbed, they're burning the last of the sumps in, or in the middle of grading operations, so. Pretty much on pace for the same timeframe as what we initially established, other than a few rain days, so.
I have, uh, Mr., and I forward this to you guys, Mr. Stover has, uh, next Monday, a week from now, we'll be voting on some amendments to the contract regarding the, uh, proposed football field, um, that originally in the project did not have it being finished, that, and just conversations with the board, uh, in where we are budget, that we're gonna be addressing the possibility, next Monday, of finishing one football field. And John has graciously forwarded to us some, uh.
Relocation of the block.
Yeah, rearranging that for different directions, uh, to be accommodating to property lines and what have you. John, I think, uh, fair words, the word feasibility.
Yes, sir. Um, as you know, when we started the project, looked at the initial layout that was done by one of your previous engineers, probably ten years or so ago, the initial phase that we're building now was built and compacted just across the bridge location. As you know, we prepared three different concept plans and cost estimates to show you what was available, what the cost you'd build that location as opposed to, um, the current location. Basically, Yona Preserve is pretty hilly like a good bit of White County, and there were two optimum spots right across from each other that are, uh, fairly flat in relation to the rest of that site, which is where we located the four baseball field, Kimberly, and the two additional football fields, which at the original time, based on budget concerns, we went ahead and showed the mass grading for those football fields, and that they would just be seeded, uh, to establish grass on them, but would not be finished at this time until we got bids on the, the general contractors on the site, at which time y'all had done look at whether or not you chose to go ahead and finish out those two fields. And as you know, the quote to finish out those two fields is approximately two-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars. And the quote to do one is basically half that at one ten. So, um, the, the area for both fields has been cleared to this point, um, and then what I provided in front of you there was, if you wanted to only do one field and didn't intend to do the second field in the future, that you could turn the field ninety degrees, tuck it back closer to the road, and save additional room.
All right, Jimmy, you all got a copy of that?
Yeah, we're doing it.
Yeah.
All right, uh, I'll leave you by comments. Hey, for the project, it's, it's looking great. I mean, given the fact it's rained since like every third day, it's good.
Yes, sir. I mean, it's difficult right now because they've, they haven't gotten to the point to get enough of everything out to start, uh, rocking the road or anything to establish that. But as far as the grading on the road going in, everything's good with it, but again, when you get five or six inches of rain with that red clay, it's gonna muck up. They gotta get a time to dry out again, um, before they really get in there and get a town working. But the good news is a lot of the major rain that we've gotten last, uh, month and a half, two months has been while they were in the clearing operations before everything was, was grubbed. So, the soil wasn't necessarily open, so.
Yes, sir. You got a regular bad spot on the roads right there, peeking at the heat before you start.
Yes, sir. Right as you make the last turn before you can get up to the peak right there, that's, that's the, the one area that's, you know, the worst right now.
It wet right now.
And as they get a little bit of that further along, uh, and some of the additional storm drainage goes in, what you got right now, we've got a series of storm drains on both sides of the road, on those ditches that feed out at different points, and right now, some of that's not in yet, so especially down by the bridge area, you catch several hundred feet comes all down to the end and comes out right to the bridge before that storm drain gets put in. Otherwise, that's gonna divide up that flow, it won't be quite as heavy right there, so.
It reminded me of what we decided to do regarding, once we get far enough in, uh, we'll leave it gravel, or we're gonna cut the, uh, that rough asphalt, then the final layer after all the grading's done, what was it, kind of bring the board up and steal?
Yes, sir. What we had is a discussion about whether or not we would do, um, grade aggregate base and then possibly a binder layer of asphalt with a topping or surface course at a later date, um, which is often done in commercial developments and subdivisions, once until houses get in, you come back and put your last, your last inch of surface topping in. But I think what we had decided the last time was that we were gonna look at putting down the GAB and then coming back and freshening up the GAB, uh, prior to paving, so to avoid the cost of additional, um, binder layer of asphalt in there. Because we, at worst case, we lose a little bit of the GAB during the construction period, we can put, we can put that GAB back, freshen it up, or you can pack that top portion a lot cheaper than we could do it with a asphalt binder.
You agree?
I agree. Uh, I noticed some places, when I was in there last week, when Chad and I were in there, there were some places that the, that the rain was, and I know it was the rain that was making the road really bump, so we need to, uh.
Yes, sir, we have.
It needs to aerate to a place, you get some air in that soil, get that soil tightened back up a little bit.
Yes, sir, and from talking to them, they, they're blading some of that out, scarifying some of it, then they get a rain again, but we'll obviously make sure that, that's all done and proofed for all prior to putting down the GAB.
I mean, there might be some spots that they have to use some stone or something to beef up that, to those places.
And we are doing, we do have third-party testing, uh, going on, contractors, not contractors, and the county is a portion of your budget, is handling third-party testing with a separate geotechnical and material testing firm.
Who would they use into that?
Uh, it's, I always get their name wrong.
Is it Rodney?
It's Rodney, but. Southern Geotech.
Southern Geotech.
And he also had Rodney?
I'm sorry, we use a lot of geotechnical firms all over the state, and ninety percent of them have a name that's like one word different.
Yeah, he's, he's been on John, most of John's, he and I.
Did you get an opportunity to look at the, the first entrance on Caroline Springs that we had, that didn't get washed away, 'cause, well, it did, but it was on gravel.
The portion nearest to here? Yes, sir, I did, uh, prior to coming here between my site and down there, uh, went down in there, um, and it's cleaned up pretty well. Um, actually, I had a, I had a eighteen-wheeler food service. Actually, I had a eighteen-wheeler food service truck follow me out of coming back this way on that end, and he didn't have any trouble negotiating the new, the new rise where we're taking some of that slope out prior to landing, so he followed me right up, and I couldn't make a left at the time because of oncoming traffic, so he had to stop on the slope, and didn't seem to have any trouble following me back up after that, so... The only concern there is we're just, we're working right now on a little bit of changes with the guardrail portion right there related to that sign that's there, so I'm trying to...
I ain't want to be moved, or...
In the original plan, we asked for, we showed for the sign to be relocated or removed. If it's left in its current location, because the sign is a single pole and extends over the, to the edge of the roadway to protect from box trucks, et cetera, striking it there, we're pretty tight on guardrail of that portion right there, so we're looking at a couple of different solutions on that that we discussed with Dave earlier, so...
You have anything?
And then on, and then on the two remaining projects that we actively are working on right now for y'all, which is the Yona Preserve Trailhead Facility and the Freedom Park Bathroom Facility, those plans and bid documents will be ready this week for advertising. And again, as we stated before, we're going to bid them separately, but with an option, if you were to get both jobs a de-dub, if you were to be awarded those jobs. That way, your pricing's close enough, and you can get the same person doing both, and then you get another additional de-dub on it, you can take advantage of that.
And that's it?
The bid opening on that would be, you said?
It'd be approximately July sixteenth, I believe, is what I...
Yeah, I think so.
Anything else for John, while he's here? John, you need anything from us?
Yes, sir.
I said, next Monday, we'll take care, we got the, the power, Georgia Power.
Yes, sir.
So, we got to make a decision about the location of the football field.
That's correct.
The football field. Well, I think, is that what we've got for Monday?
Yeah.
And Kevin will be here to talk about, talk about the money aspect of it.
John, for some reason, tell me...
Yeah, I believe that's all right now.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
Sir, we appreciate the opportunity to work with you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Tom, back to Yona Preserve, for those who have not had an opportunity, this past weekend had a soft opening. I missed the nine o'clock opening, but I was there at one o'clock, and Commissioner Goody was there at nine or so, and they were covered up.
I was there at eight, Beth was there.
Covered up. I did the one o'clock, and I actually, I didn't see anybody else there in this room.
They had a lot of trouble.
It was, I was well pleased, I'm seriously, from county staff, thank y'all, y'all's hard work, road department, seriously, it was, parking lot worked out very well. The, I had compliments about the signage in front, Yona Preserve, the intro, entry. Commissioner Goody, do you know where we stand on the stack stones?
Ken, you got any idea what the stack stones are?
We are waiting on manning forms on the columns...
Okay.
Before Mark can start that. So, just as soon as those are added to it, we can get started on stone.
I just say, I want to add on the record, Shannon, please make this note, that I had requested that Mr. Melton reach out to our design firm on Caroline Springs, we can case the guy to notify them of the loss that we had of part of the road on Caroline Springs. And Mr. Melton, you have received correspondence back, they're aware of the...
They are aware of it.
Do you know if they've seen anyone up here to take a look at it yet or anything?
I did, I did ask the engineer for some additional information, but they have not received back any additional information.
All right. Keep us as you can, keep us in the loop on that, please. All right. Gentlemen, before I start going through upcoming dates and what have, do y'all have anything else that... Thanks, John.
Appreciate it.
I appreciate y'all's, knowing y'all's time. That's one of the challenges when you do a combined work session in a called meeting together, we end up having to talk about stuff that we would normally discuss at the work session without the pressure of having to vote on those particular items, so we're asking questions while we're trying to make decisions, so I appreciate your patience. Here we go. Next week, June eighteenth, we have a called meeting for budget adoptions, well, that's got some business items we've got to address. As of today, Mr. Melton, Ms. Shannon, normally we would have a work session on June twenty-fifth. How are, are you aware of many items that need to be addressed on the twenty-fifth, or...
Not that I'm aware of, Mr. Chairman, we should. Everything I know, we should do.
Were there any news, items advertised for the twenty-fifth? So, everything that I have currently is either, you know, in today's agenda or next Monday.
Okay, so we're okay. We're, everything's current? And here's where I'm going here, if we were to, if there's no need to have a meeting, say having a meeting on the twenty-fifth and July second, which is the week of July fourth, Independence Week, is there, I'm looking ahead here, do we foresee a need to have a meeting on either of those dates, given that we've got another meeting a week from today?
Not that I'm aware of, Mr. Chairman.
Gentlemen, are you aware of anything?
I'm aware of it.
Okay. All right. So, there's a, we're going to review some, we'll review the schedules and see how we're looking, but it looks like we may not, we may not be having a work session nor a regular meeting on June twenty-fifth nor July second.
We got a lot of money to spend anyway.
Yeah. Sounds good. County offices will be closed Wednesday, July the fourth, observance of Independence Day. Is there anything else? I will, let me say this, I did say this a little while ago, does anyone have anything that, from a public participation perspective, that you'd like to ask at this time? I think we wore everybody out tonight.
Yeah, we're best. That's why we're here, promise.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you guys again. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
We want to adjourn. One thing before we adjourn.
I asked how many times?
Well, y'all wouldn't, you wouldn't wait long enough, let me say it. I got blistered yesterday at church. If I hadn't been at church, I'd have really got chewed out yesterday. Thank goodness I was in the church, y'all. So, no fishing signs on the pond up there. Guys, we got, I'm just asking y'all to put some thought into this fishing thing, because it's going to get worse. I'm going to start giving them y'all's own home numbers to mine.
The board wants, we want to have fishing out there, but we've got to take, this is such a huge project, we're taking bits as we can because we're trying to figure out how to staff the openings and what have you, but yes, I'm agreement, we need to do something.
I mean, if the gates are open and Zorba's in there riding, and the trails are open, I see no reason why somebody can sit down on the bank and throw a worm out there and let the snow bomb around. I just don't, I just don't, I don't see, I mean, if you walk the trail, you ride bicycle on the trail, and you go in there and walk all over the place, I don't see why you can't drown the worm while you're in there. It's just like, think about it.
Yeah, hold with the front paragraph, the next meeting.
Think about it. That's all, what you do, think about it.
Remember, $2,000 for a rescue boat.
Will you, I said, will you say the motion to adjourn?
No.
Which, Nick, second, all in favor of the adjournment, say aye.
Appreciate it.
Issue of swimming in L.A.?
No, no swimming, no boating, right now.
Well, 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 that's not a problem.
Yeah.